Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lacy Township Caucus Meeting, September 14th, 2017. I'll read the statement, and we'll say Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, special use permit. A, Murray Grove Annual Homecoming Celebration, September 30th.
Murray Grove is asking for a special use permit at their site located on Route 9 across from Murray Grove Lane to have their annual homecoming event for when the Universal Church was founded. Again, this has been reviewed and approved from the zoning office. You can see there's a map outlining how they're going to do the parking, where they're having the staging areas, and the vendors, and the events. So I just need a motion. And I did tell them that it was, you know, same day as our Lacy Day, but they had already had this in the works and didn't realize it.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item two, naming the roadway in Cloon Park.
As we all know, one of the great members of the Lacy Youth Football Association, which is the old Pop Warner, George Riley, has passed away about a month or so ago. They are looking to honor, put something in, and honor him in his name. The football fields down at Cloon Park have already been named after other members of the organization. They were wondering if, as you go into Cloon Park, and you'd make a right to go into that little roadway into the parking area, if that roadway could be named in honor of George Riley. They would like to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and do all of that, and get a sign posted, a street sign, naming it after him for everything he's done for the football association.
Very appropriate. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I have an add-on here, too. The ladies' auxiliary, the Knights of Columbus, have come in today. They are having a rummage sale at their hall on October 14th from 9:00 to 4:00, and they are looking to post, you know, the typical lawn signs throughout the community a week in advance of the event. So I just needed permission to do that since they're a nonprofit.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is all I have to add on here.
Motion to close. So a motion to close? Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move right into township meeting. I'll read the statement this evening. We'll have a salute to the flag followed by a moment of silence. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Ashbury Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading of ordinance 2017-22, authorizing a lease agreement renewal with the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority.
In order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing the execution of a lease with the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority for Block 276, Lot 10, and Block 276 Lots 13 through 15, commonly known as 124 South Main Street. This is where the authority's offices are currently located. The lease expires the end of this month in September. It was a 25-year lease, and they are looking at this point to renew this lease for three years until a certificate of occupancy, and they have occupied their new premises.
May I have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number two, first reading of ordinance 2017-23, authorizing the conveyance of property to the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority.
In order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of Block 1836, Lot 47, to the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B1. This is a one-acre parcel located back behind their current MUA garage building that we are donating to the MUA for them to expand their current premises and do their new office building.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. -- who made the motion? Mr. McDonald? Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number three, second reading of ordinance 2017-17, authorizing an added assessment for roadway and sidewalk improvements on Calvin Street.
In order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, providing for street and utility improvements on Calvin Street, appropriating $165,389 therefore, and directing the special assessment of the costs thereof. Over where the Lacy Affordable Apartments are, they had, Walters Development Group had made the improvements, and the LMUA had put in the water and sewer to those vacant lots that are heading west towards Newark Avenue. There is an added assessment on those lots that the homeowners will pay and reimburse the township in Walters for the cost of staying.
Move it.
Second.
Open the floor to public comment. Second reading, please. Sir, did you have a reading? Did you have a comment? You raised your hand, sir.
No.
Okay.
Seeing none, make a motion to close the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, a motion on the ordinance?
Motion on the ordinance.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number four, second reading of ordinance 2017-20, setting the salary for the Municipal Alliance Coordinator.
In order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations to the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the salary through the grant for the Municipal Alliance Coordinator at $25 per hour.
Move it.
Second.
Open the floor to public comment.
Second. Open the floor to public comment, please. Seeing none, make a motion to close it. Second? Please.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number five, second reading of ordinance 2017-21, amending Chapter 234 of the Municipal Code.
In order to the township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, amending the township code of the township of Lacy so as to amend Chapter 234 entitled Massage Establishments by removing Section 234 11 entitled Treatment of Opposite Sex Prohibited. Our current code for the massage establishments, which was created in, I believe, 1974, did not allow for a massager to massage a member of the opposite sex. It's a little antiquated in today's world, and we have a new massage establishment coming in, plus quite a few here in town that find it hard to keep their business going. So we're removing the language that says that a female can not massage a male and a male could not massage a female. So we're going there so you can do same and opposite sex.
Being the second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, make a motion to close it.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number six, Resolution 2017-234, authorizing an inter-local services agreement with the Board of Education.
The Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing the execution of inter-local services agreement with the Lacy Township Board of Education for school crossing guards. As we know, the school has changed their courtesy busing policy, and this has created the need for additional school crossing guard posts, and the school will be reimbursing the Township of Lacy for those costs.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number seven, Resolution 2017-235, authorizing inter-local services agreement with the County of Ocean for the DRECP.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the execution of inter-local services agreement with the County of Ocean for police services for the drug recognition expert call-out program. We give reimbursed $50 an hour pertaining to our officers that are called out that belong to this program.
Move it.
Second.
Please.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number eight, Resolution 2017-236, authorizing an inter-local services agreement with the County of Ocean for the DEWIEP.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the execution of inter-local services agreement with the County of Ocean for police services for driving while intoxicated enforcement program. And again, the county reimburses us $50 an hour for the officers that belong to this program.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number nine, Resolution 2017-237, amending a contract with O'Donnell Stanton Associates for New Jersey State Plan Endorsement.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, amending a contract with O'Donnell Stanton and Associates as a consultant for the New Jersey State Plan endorsement process. This is an amendment to the original contract. It is in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 10, Resolution 2017-238, awarding a contract for affordable housing administrators as the township's administrative agent.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, awarding a contract to affordable housing administrators as an affordable housing administrative agent for the Lacy Township Rehabilitation Program. This is in accordance with our settlement before the court master for our COA housing obligations. We're required to appoint an administrative agent. This is on an as-needed basis, so there is no dollar amount associated with this contract until we call upon her services.
Motion.
Move it.
Second. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 11, Resolution 2017-239, awarding a contract for the East Lacy Road Improvement Project.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, awarding a contract to CJ Hess Incorporated for the 2016 East Lacy Road Improvement Project. This is in the amount of $336,613.12. It is awarded to CJ Hess. This will be anticipated to begin around October 12th.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item number 12, Resolution 2017-240, awarding contract for SHI for the police computer network upgrade.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of software for the network upgrade for the Lacy Township Police Department to SHI. This is for Microsoft Office Professional Plus 2016. It is in the amount of $11,831.75, and this was all appropriated in the capital budget at the time it was approved.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 13, Resolution 2017-241, authorizing a developers' agreement with Lacy Family Apartments.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a developer and reimbursement agreement with Lacy Family Apartments LLC. This is in regards to the added assessment for the roadway and water and sewer improvements that are on Calvin Street.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 14, Resolution 2017-242, provisionally appointing a purchasing agent.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the provisional promotion of Rochelle Lynch to purchasing the agent pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 15, Resolution 2017-243, appointing a Class 1 Special Law Enforcement Officer.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, appointing Timothy R. Swain as a Class 1 Special Law Enforcement Officer for the Township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 16, Resolution 2017-244, appointing a Class 2 Special Law Enforcement Officers.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, appointing Michael Muller, Tyler Walsh, Matthew D. Cataldo as Class 2 Special Law Enforcement Officers for the Township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 17, due to resignation. Item number 18, Resolution 2017-246, authorizing the receipt of bids for various projects.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for bulk bituminous material, sand, gravel, stone, and screed topsoil, and loader rentals for the leaf and snow season for the Township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 19, Resolution 2017-247, providing for a special item of revenue.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2017 municipal budget known as Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87. This is in the amount of $5,500. It is the grant that we received from the State of New Jersey on the drive sober or get pulled over.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 20, Resolution 2017-248, authorizing the reduction of a performance bond for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase 2A.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing reduction of a site improvement performance guarantee for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase 2A conditioned upon the posting of a new performance guarantee. This has been reviewed by the township engineer. It is being reduced from $657,187 to $387,539.54.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 21, Resolution 2017-249, authorizing a reduction of a performance bond for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase 2B.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing reduction of a site improvement performance guarantee for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase 2B conditioned upon the posting of a new performance guarantee. This was all, again, reviewed by the township engineer. It is going from $1,429,600 to $603,051.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 22, Resolution 2017-250, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 166, Lot 8, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1013 Anchor Way, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $258.75.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 23, Resolution 2017-251, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 197, Lot 3, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1519 Daytona Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $316.25.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 24, Resolution 2017-252, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 249, Lot 2, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 422 Riverview Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $488.75.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 25, Resolution 2017-253, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 459, Lot 7, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 516 Morley Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $287.50.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 26, Resolution 2017-254, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 767.02, Lot 6, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 412 Predmore Avenue, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $545.
Move it.
Second.
Is that you? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 27, Resolution 2017-255, refunding a road opening permit fee.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing a refund of permit fees to New Jersey Natural Gas Company for road opening permit 4187, which was for Morin Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 28, Resolution 2017-256, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
Item 29, Resolution 2017-257, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,153,032.42.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, all abstain on lender D0400.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes, with noted abstentions, D0400, 01021, and T0035.
Okay.
Item number 30, monthly reports.
For the month of August, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts in the amount of $5,232.39. For the month of August, community development collected receipts in the amount of $104,824.75. For the month of August, road opening permits were collected in the amount of $70,975. And recycling commodity was in the amount of $8,851. For the month of July, municipal docs were collecting the amount of $825. Municipal court for the month of July was in the amount of $31,666. For the month of August, municipal court was in the amount of $26,504.52. Motion to accept the reports is read?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of August 10th, 2017. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 32, motion to approve township meeting minutes of August 10th, 2017. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 33, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of September 7th, 2017. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 34, motion to approve junior membership in the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company for Matthew Todd. Move it.
Second.
The next one we're gonna table. Item 35 we need.
We need to finish 34.
We had Tim and Stephen.
Yes, correct.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 35, we will table for this evening.
Yeah, there's an issue with the application.
Item 36, motion to approve raffle license applications for Region 6 NJNSA.
That's the Nursing Association.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I have an add-on resolution this evening. It's Resolution 2017-259. It's a resolution of Township Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, appointing Daniel McGill as Director of Public Works for the Township of Lacy effective October 23rd, 2017.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
We will have committee comments this evening. Deputy Mayor Juliana.
Thank you, Mayor Kurtolo. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to remind everybody, September 30th is Lacy Day, along with the Apple Festival at Gilly Park. I hope that gets well-attended this year, which it always is. I think this year it's even gonna be better with the Apple Festival being with it. I had the honor of Lacy Kids for a Cure. What a wonderful group of young people, raising awareness and funds for Alex's Lemonade Stand. I had the pleasure, again, this year of attending the event last Friday. They called it the Million Mile Walk. It was well-attended. They raised a good amount of money, and we were all there there.
Very nice.
Yes, it was. Very good. On Saturday morning, last Saturday morning, I had the pleasure of going to the food bank. They dedicated their community garden. A young man named Kyle Woolman built it as part of his Eagle Scout work. Also, with the help from the Boy Scout Troop 56 and 156, they built a vegetable garden for the clients of the food bank. I share all of this because it's important to be appreciative of all the volunteers in the town and everything everybody does in the town. They do a wonderful job, and I'd like to really give a big thank you for all of the things that the police department, DPW, and REC, for all of these things and functions that they get involved in. I want to thank them, too. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Committee, may I?
Thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking on what Nick said with the Alex's Lemonade Stand that we had last week. That, if you remember, started a couple years ago. It's a little young girl in elementary school here in town, Zoe Smith. Her brother and all their little friends kinda got together and had a little lemonade stand over on Lake Bonn Get Drive, and, you know, they're part of the overall Alex's Lemonade Stand operation that is really, you know, countrywide at this point in time. But they have made that little stand grow into what, you know, turned out to be probably the most people I've seen in Gilly Park for any single event, you know, on Friday night. It was really, truly, a great thing to see that they've come so far, and that the kids that are in, you know, elementary school anywhere from, I guess, first grade up through middle school have put their heart and soul into such an important cause, especially being that this is cancer, you know, pediatric month, so it was certainly a good time to do it. But I certainly applaud the kids, I applaud their parents, and, you know, I just can't see how, you can't stop growing because they've done that much good work in this town. So it's a great representation of the youth in our town. One thing Nick just didn't bring up, which we were all at also, was last week we had the Women's Club reorganization, breakfast which we all get invited to on an annual basis in town here. And I just, you know, I want to thank them, number one, for the invitation, but the Women's Club, you know, just briefly, you know, is an organization that is, you know, we consider them the unsung heroes of the town because you don't hear a lot about them, they're not looking for a lot of accolades, but they do so many different projects in the community, they do so much good in the community, and they, you know, they certainly enlightened each and every one of us. You know, we all go each year, and they each get up and speak about the different things that are involved, and it was certainly, it was a great morning, it was a lot of fun, and, you know, I thanked them for the invitation. We certainly look forward to doing it again next year. I have a couple announcements I just want to make from, Chief LaBella asked me to announce this evening. Okay, first one is Team Award of Valor. On Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, Officers Anthony Sarno and Christopher Meyerler, along with Fork River Firefighters Robert Anderson and Edward Barker Jr., were recognized by the Liberty, by the National Liberty Museum in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania during their Awards of Valor event. All four of these gentlemen attended the event in Philadelphia where they received the Team Award of Valor as a result of saving an elderly woman from residential structure fire on the 1800 block of Serpentine Drive in Fork River during the early morning hours of November 25th, 2017. All four of these men will have their photographs along with a description of a life-saving event posted in a section of the museum. Additionally, these four men were also honored earlier this year by the 200 Club of Ocean County. They truly are heroes, you know, they went into a very dangerous situation, and if it wasn't for them reacting the way they did, that woman certainly wouldn't be with us today, so they deserve a tremendous amount of credit. Next one is Gilly Park Skate Park Event, another one coming up. The next Gilly Park Skate, Skate Event will be on Friday, September 22nd, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. over at Gilly Park. There's gonna be a live DJ playing music starting at 6:00 p.m. along with other fun activities, including a gaming trailer. As always, Lacy Township Police Department, along with our local fire departments and our First A squads, will be in attendance. These events are all coordinated by the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation, Lacy Township Recreation, and Municipal Alliance. If anyone has any questions, please contact Lacy Township Director or Department at 693-1100 extension 2203. For additional information, you can also log on to the Lacy Township Police Department website, and that website is lacypd.org. We have another free child safety seat check coming along. Lacy Township Police Department is hosting a free child safety check in the parking lot of Walmart this time, located at 580 Route 9 North in Lenoka Harbor. It's gonna be next Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Specially trained certified child seat technicians from the Lacy Township Police Department and the Ocean County Sheriff's Department will be on-site to conduct courtesy child seat inspections and to assist participants in the proper installation of child seats. If you're unable to make the event, you can also schedule an appointment for a child safety, child seat safety check by contacting Lacy Township Police Department at 693-6636. For additional information, you can also log on to the police department's website. Believe me, as a new grandfather last year, that's a great event to go to if you don't understand car seats, because I certainly didn't, and thanks to them I have my little guy safe in my car every time I drive around town, so.
Which is all the time.
Which is all the time.
That's correct.
I'm not gonna argue that. Last item, law enforcement explorer post number one. The Ocean County Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Explorer Post 1 is still looking for a few more young adults, age 14 to 21, to join if you're interested in a career in law enforcement. For additional requirements and information, you can log on to Lacy Township Police Department website, lacypd.org, and click the box at the top that states "About Us." Scroll down to the Police Explorer Program bar where additional information will be provided, or you can call Lieutenant Sullivan at the police station, 693-6636, and that's extension 2577. Again, that's a program that the chief and the sheriff have been working hand-in-hand with and really bringing a lot of young kids into it, some of which we actually hired this evening as special law enforcement officers for our town here, so there is a good future if you want to get involved in it, but you do learn a lot, and it's certainly, it, but you do learn a lot, and it certainly, you know, brings, brings kids into a much quicker maturity, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Committee McQuinn. Committee McKennas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing Gary's comments, I also wanna thank the Women's Club for hosting us at their new member event. The Women's Club does a lot of civic activities in town, and they focus a lot on special needs fundraising. If anyone's interested, they meet the second Wednesday of every month at Community Hall, I believe, at nine AM. Couple planning board items, we're continuing our plan endorsement process with the State Planning Commission, we're hoping to have that wrapped up sometime in November. It's really important for the future of the town, and hopefully we'll have no more problems throughout, um, throughout the rest of the year. And we also, we're also revisiting the Haynes Light, the Haynes Light and Lake Barnegat Drive. Sort of put that back on the front burner to see if we can make some improvements to help the safety conditions there, so.
Go ahead, Mayor. Thank you, Committee McKennas. Committee Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I too also, with Deputy Mayor Giuliano, attended the food bank, the Eagle Scout Project. Outstanding job by Kyle. I don't think people realize what it takes to put an Eagle Scout project together. It's just not something a kid dreams up in his head and gets permission from the scoutmaster. He actually has to submit a plan up to council. Then he has to go up to council in front of about three or four men, or women, and defend his plan as to why it's good for the township. So if you can imagine yourself sixteen, seventeen, having to do that, how scared and nervous you were. And before you even get to that point, they'll kick it back three or four times. I notice as a father of an Eagle Scout project, and it gets very frustrating for the parents, because you're sitting on top of the kid making sure everything is right, that every word is written correctly, but it's a very tough project, and the project he did is outstanding, truly, truly, truly outstanding. So I just wanna do a good shout-out to Kyle for that. Recreation, summer camp's over. It was a good summer camp, and what they're doing now, if you can get to their Facebook page, there's an online survey on how we can improve summer camp. So go ahead, and if you had a child in there, I know that Jim said he sent the link to you, Stephen, to you, Mayor.
Yes.
So go ahead and fill that out, and we're gonna take that and look at it and do some improvements for next year. Lacey Day is coming up, so we moved it from the middle of August because of the heat to the end of September, and we combined it with Apple Fest. So it's gonna be a great day, and I hope everyone can come out. Hopefully it's a cool day. Hoffy Wallace Park is, is started. We're doing the basketball courts, and we're doing the stuff the kids play on, swings and so forth like that. And speaking with Casey, he said that'll probably be done around the middle of October, which is a good thing. And I think that's, that's, oh, so school's open, so, and right now, because of the courtesy buses, we have a lot more kids walking to school, to and from school, to and, or, and from after-school activities. So let's be extra careful out there, we hate to, hate to have an accident or something like that, so just be extra, extra careful. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have some brief comments tonight, I too wanna echo some of the sentiments that were set up here, in particular with the summer recreation camp. My daughter does go there. I'm grateful to have a quality camp like that as a parent, let alone as mayor, I'm very proud of it. The supervision, the young people are certified, we have a choice of parks at a very, very competitive price, I think one of the most competitive price points in the county. So if you don't know about it, look into it, it's the families, it grows every year, and the families do really enjoy it. I also wanna touch on Alex's Lemonade Stand. Yes, we were there, and I received a text today from Kelly Smith, who organized it, really there were several organizers. But to sum it up, just the three hundred people that were there, when it's been our largest yet, it's been their largest output yet, raised over five thousand dollars for pediatric cancer, over five thousand dollars in just a couple of hours. So it's a great honor to be associated with public outreach like that. It makes it easy to be a public servant, and we're all very proud to support that, that charity in particular. I would like to thank the Police Department. We had a tragedy here a few weeks ago, their response was nothing short of outstanding. Everything was secured. I wanna thank personally the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, but for the support we get from them, they, they really helped us out with that, and it's important to mention our partners at the county level, including our Board of Freeholders. And I would also like to say that at Lacey United Methodist Church, I was honored to be one of the speakers approximately two weeks ago on overdose awareness night, and we had our deputy mayor there as well, because he and I serve on the Municipal Alliance, and it was an important outreach. Again, Prosecutor Coronado was there, he's very pleased with Lacey Township and the outreach that, you know, that we do over there, all of us do, you know, a very, very small part of it. The volunteers make it what it is, including the Municipal Alliance and the police that have an outreach and education, not just enforcement. I would like to touch on Lacey Day. I was able to talk to our REC director, I guess, some time ago. Some of the outreach from our stores and our partners have really kept the price down, and we're talking about donations of two thousand bags of chips, three thousand waters, a few hundred sandwiches, five hundred sponsorships. So that's why when people, when our families come out during that day, and everybody enjoys it, it's at no cost, it's at no cost to the tax, it's at very little cost, and it's at no cost to the people who attend. So we're very proud of that. We know Lacey Day, along with our Fourth of July Celebration and our Christmas Parade, we're very happy to be able to have a part in providing that, and the amount of people, families, children, that, you know, participate in that, I think there's something to be said for that. With that, I will open the floor to public comment. Yes, sir? Name and address.
Sonya and Andrew, Doug and Rob?
Yes, sir.
Start off with a taxing question, and I've been trying to figure it out for a couple of years now, how five men can go into a room and hire somebody incompetent, and then approve it a second time, I don't get it, but I'm gonna try and give you some points.
Can you, can you, can you raise the microphone, sir, just a little bit? Appreciate it. Yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
I know, I know the committee is against people who file tax appeals.
Well, that's not true, that's your right, that's your right, sir.
That is true, but I got a tongue lashing last time I was here, so. I figured you guys are hiring somebody that's incompetent for a reason. I guess you just wanna frustrate the residents. So I'm gonna take you back a year, and then I'll bring you up to date.
Okay.
If you'll work with me here. I filed a tax appeal, lost it at the town level, filed a state appeal. I get a call from somebody representing the township, telling me that something happened with the date, and they weren't able to make the date, and they were gonna change the date. I said, I guess that's what happens, you know? So I know in my rights, I figured, let me call the state and find out what's going on. I call the state, and they say, no, they can't, this township can't change the date. I can change the date, because I made the appeal. So.
I'm sorry, I think that they're probably requesting the ability to change it, and then what they would do is they would reach back out to the court and say they received your consent.
Right, but they didn't tell me that I had the, I could change it. I had the ability to change it and not change it. So what happened was, bottom line is, I called the state, they say, no, you don't have to change it, you can go with it. So I wasn't, and the reason this, the town wasn't ready is because they weren't prepared for that date. So not only did the township lose the appeal, they paid for council, and I can show you all the numbers, and you know that, I'm not gonna compare, tell you the lie. They paid for council, and you guys paid back and forth, and I won the appeal. So to get the appeal, I guess somebody signs off on it, the person I'm talking about. So I get my taxes, and of course, it's wrong. So, okay, I'm gonna do his work again. So I call, and they have to fix it for me. They cross it out.
That came from the tax collector, that doesn't come from downstairs.
Does the Veronica, and I hate to put you on the spot, but let me tell you, if you were in his, if you were anywhere near his, his ability, you, believe me, this meeting wouldn't even go anyways.
I think it'd be the other way around.
It's just incompetence, he was just, if your incompetency was anywhere near him, Veronica, believe me, I've dealt with it numerous times, and if something's wrong, you tell me it's wrong, and we go along. But he is just beyond that. Okay, so who signs off on this? Does that gentleman sign off on the appeal?
At the state level?
Of course.
At the state level? It's gone to Trenton at this point?
No, it, what happened was, Veronica, he called up, the representative called up, and we worked out a deal.
Right, so it never went to Trenton, to state tax court, it was at the local level with the county?
They weren't prepared.
Was it county?
But we paid for council on that, just so you know. So they sent me the thing, I have to call and fix that.
They who, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
They who? You talking about the state, the county, or this building?
This is a bill, right here.
That's a local bill, I, I get that, but you're saying that, that somebody called you, and you first said you filed a state tax appeal, so I'm assuming when you-
The state appeal was done, that's finished, I won then.
Okay.
We had just-
At Trenton, though, you went to Trenton to state, or did you just go to the county level?
We, we fixed it up. They didn't go to Trenton, I didn't go to Trenton.
So you settled it?
Michael called me up and said we're gonna make a deal, and, you know, I picked what was behind door number two, I should've picked door number three. So what happened was, I get my bill, and of course, it's wrong. So now I have to call the township and do their job again. So I call the township, and they change it, cross it off, and I guess they could do this to anybody's bill. It's amazing, I'm amazed how you can do it.
It's very possible that what happened with your appeal is that when the bills went out, that she didn't have the finalization of the tax appeal from the low, from the appeal level. It's very possible.
Everything's, anything's possible, but it just so happens that everything's possible on my end, okay? So let me take you up to date. Mr. Mayor, do you know what these are?
I do not, I can't see them from here.
Is it a?
They're your, right, your evaluation.
Their values.
Now, they're delivering-
No, these are delinquent notices.
Right.
Yeah, these are delinquent notices.
They're delivering in my mailbox, right, Mr. Mayor? So the person who delivers is thinking that my taxes are delinquent. Now we're gonna go back to this incompetent person again, I'm gonna give you a copy of this, and I'll walk you through it, and I don't know if you know the pages.
Listen. Why don't we make an appointment to sit down and talk about it?
Because I'm all in here, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Let me think of the exact words.
He's talking about two different offices.
My bad. I'm not twenty years old. This is the biggest bill I have. And you guys are against, I, believe me, are against anybody that does tax appeals. There four of you guys are up here, did not say a word, Mr. Mayor, when I took a tongue lashing. And he also said that no one up here filed an appeal, which was a hundred percent wrong.
I was here that night when Mr. Quinn had his comments, and, and I didn't hear him say anything anything inaccurate.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
I didn't say Mr. Quinn was.
Okay, you're pointing to him.
No, 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 I was pointing to the person sitting next to me, Mr. Footnill is who I'm talking to.
Okay.
You were here, so you were sitting next to me. He gave me a tongue lashing, gave me the rights of why I do it, and why the rates are high, and why everybody's taxes are high.
Just to clarify, it wasn't Mr. Quinn.
Do it all.
That's right.
Believe me. I've never spoken many times.
As I'm moving.
I'd rather meet with him one-on-one than go to the committee.
You have it.
Right, so let me take you up to this, since you don't know what this is.
Well...
This is my property tax, okay? It says as that I owe fourteen hundred and five dollars, and if you can look at it, Mayor, I'll bring your attention to seven-three, twenty-seventeen. I highlighted it for you. Now, I went away for six weeks. I went to the town, and I said, where do I go?
You'd be hard this next time.
And they said, the government was on the beach, so they didn't have a number. So, I said that I'm going to be gone for six weeks, so let me leave you a check. If you look at it, Mr. Mayor, I left a check there.
Yeah, I don't understand. Is this a...
Not only did I leave a check, I left a check, what, five hundred and something dollars more than I owed.
Tony, this is in point, this is in font .01. I just cannot read this. Now, I'd be happy to read it with you.
I'll read it for you. Yeah, I mean, because I couldn't read either. That was out of printing. On seven-three...
I'm having trouble.
Can I see the... I'll follow.
Can you see them, please?
On seven-three, I made a deposit of two thousand dollars, right?
I can see that.
All right? I have a credit of two-eighty-eight from the last quarter, because I just, I don't like to round it up. I overpaid by about six hundred dollars. We all agree on that? Why do I have a delinquent and put that in my mailbox?
I can't even answer that on this, looking at this, because there's a, there's a date sequence out of order here, too, so I can't...
It's the...
I can't answer that.
I'm going right back to, you guys like to frustrate, is, am I not just that unlucky? Is, do I have a target on my back? I have better things to do with my days. Like I said, Mayor, that's my biggest bill. That is in my mailbox twice. You're looking at my bill. I gave you two thousand dollars, I don't know what you want from me.
It's possible that it's a mistake. Let us look into it.
Oh, another mistake? How come all the mistakes happen to me?
Here's your original spec, so you have them.
That's all I'm asking. You hired somebody that's incompetent.
That's a copy.
Tried to prove to you that he's incompetent. You hire him again. One thing I do with my life, if you can tell me what I did wrong, I try not to repeat the same mistake. Tell me what I did wrong, either on my appeal to the state, did I do anything wrong, did I do anything wrong by paying my taxes before time, because I wasn't going to be around for six weeks? So, I got to come home after a nice vacation and see this in my mailbox. Now, should I call the guy and tell him what he's doing wrong?
Mr. Mander.
I left the two thousand dollars, my accounting background tells me that you have to have checks and balances. So, where did the two thousand dollars go?
Okay, but the person you're talking about, and you keep saying he, is not the one who posted your money or has anything to do with that.
Does he run the department for...
No, he does not run that department where you pay your money to, no!
And the collector.
He's the arch taxess.
Just tax assessment.
Tax assessment, not tax collection and adding the interest onto your account.
Does he take care of the money? Does he put it in?
No, no, no!
Wow.
He only assigns the value on the property, and that office...
Then he goes to sleep.
What?
Then he goes to sleep. What does he do?
Well, that's what you want to say, but he only assigns a value on the property, and then he sends that value upstairs, and they assign the dollar amount that we pay in taxes.
Okay, so he signs those things, so we'll go back to one year ago, so that was him, and when he didn't show up, when they weren't prepared, which was fine for me, because I was a winner on that one, when the township wasn't prepared after they had, I'm going to say, four months, Mayor, not being prepared for a date, fine for me, it's a good win for me, and you paid council for that, because council voted.
Well, that's the process. You have a right to, and you want...
I know that's the process, but I'm trying to say to you that the whole...
And I gave you my word when...
You would not put up, you would not put up with that incompetency from her, you wouldn't. You wouldn't put it up from Casey. What would happen if Casey was going to knock out the lawn for the park for two weeks? Would you go in there and knock it out? Of course you would. And that's what I'm trying to tell you. You don't deal with him on a daily basis like you do Veronica all weekly. If you did, you would see it. And it's amazing, because you don't want anybody to file an appeal, so what you do is you put somebody incompetent that doesn't want to answer your question.
Tony, you're trying to put words in everybody's mouth. Every person in this town has an opportunity, and they can file. You did, and you were successful.
Tony, can I see that postcard back again, please?
Oh, yeah.
Just for a few minutes.
And that mistake's delinquent, because nobody can catch that, so somebody took two thousand dollars.
Listen, you're a member of our community. If a mistake was made, we'll fix it. That's it.
I remember your, I'm trying to tell you the mistakes. I've gone through for two years prior, I tried to get out of it. Mayor, I walked away from the township one, I walked away from the township one, I didn't want to come to the meeting, but when I came home after six weeks to see that, who would you think? Two of them in your mailbox. What would you think?
I would call, and if it was an error, I would try to figure this out.
I just wanted to write down the dates that they sent them out.
That's the first thing you do.
That's the first thing you did?
Yeah.
And you get, oh, my bad. I'm not twenty years old, Mayor. And somebody's got to take responsibility and grow up, and you know what, don't pay them. Let me ask you a question. I'm going to get, if I didn't pay my taxes, I would have to pay interest, all right? Should the township maybe pay me interest under two thousand dollars? It's been sitting there since three months now.
You're asking us to, you're bringing this to us for the first time tonight. I did not know...
Okay, so you want me to come next week and talk to you, Mayor?
We can make an appointment to talk, I will research it, and you'll get an answer.
Okay.
I don't know if you're going to like the answer, but you will get an answer.
When did you get your state board adjustment? Like, when was that finalized? Do you have anything in there that states the date on that?
I don't have that.
I mean, I see where it was posted by the collector's office. Okay, I was just curious.
I mean, I have the whole file at home, I'm not reading it. I'm not rehashing it. Like, Veronica, I believe there's no future in the past, and I wanted to pass that. You come home, and you've got to get that in your mailbox, and the person who delivers is now thinks, anybody, it's public knowledge now, if anybody goes on there, they think I'm delinquent. I mean, that's totally ridiculous. And nothing will happen, but I figured I'd say, I'd get my say. And, you know, I'll come back next week, and I remember the other weeks I came back, and there was a deputy mayor sitting right there, and he says to me, Tony, what do you want from us? So, believe me, I don't want anything from you guys. You see how bad it is, you just keep paying the man, but like I said to you, if that incompetency was right there sitting next to you, she wouldn't be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Name and address.
A little shorter than he is.
Quite all right, well...
Okay, good evening, Committee.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Oakland Place in Fort Corvina, New Jersey.
Name, sir.
Albert and Janika.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason why I come before the committee, it's my first time, I'm a resident of Lacy for forty-five years, and this is the first time I ever come before the committee. And I see that it was brought up in one of the resolutions for property clean, cleanup, and I just wanted to point out, and I wanted to say thank you for the Code Enforcement Department, for coming out and looking at this property and having it taken care of. And I just wanted to just say thank you again, because the home was abandoned, and the residents of this home left the property in shambles. Furniture thrown all over the lawn, bedding, cardboard boxes, everything, they think a camper on this property. So, I took it upon myself, and I said, this cannot happen in our township. It's a disgrace to our neighborhood and our community. So, I think it was on a Friday, it was August the eleventh, I went to the Code Enforcement Department. They said they would look into it, and I said, fine. And that afternoon, it was late in the afternoon, the Code Enforcement Department pulled up. And so, I went over, I got a little nosy, and, because I live right down the street from it, but he said that everything would be taken care of, and that was on a Friday of August the eleventh, so they came pretty fast. And on the fourteenth, which was a Monday, a notice was put on the, on a property, that it had to be cleaned up, if they didn't, blah, blah, blah. So, I let it ride for about a week, a week and a half, and all of a sudden, someone came to the property and started cleaning up, and they assured me that they would be back within a day or so to mow the lawn and everything, which it was done. So, Code Enforcement, thank you very much, and I would say to the residents of Lacy Township, if you see this in your neighborhoods, approach the Code Enforcement Department, and I can see here that things have been taken care of, and I want to thank the committee for your time.
And if the grass gets into that, I'm sure we won't have the garbage issue anymore, because I did see pictures of that site, it was quite disastrous, but if the grass starts to get high again, make a call into the office, because now that the homeowner has been put on notice for, and again, I believe the house is abandoned, and there's no way we can contact them.
Yes.
We can just go in there now and clean it up, we don't have to wait the waiting period any longer, because they've already been noticed.
So, approach the Code Enforcement?
Yeah, just make a phone call to his office to let him know that the grass is, you know, at eighteen inches, because that's the height when it has to be mowed.
And Public Works has a hand in that as well. They work together with the Code Enforcement, so I want to thank you for coming out here tonight.
Okay, I believe it was a private contractor that came in to do all the work, so, so again, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other comments this evening?
Seeing none.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Hey, how you doing? Jesse Ernstum, Butler Lane Drive.
Thank you.
Have you been to the new park?
Bayfront Park?
Over on Beach Boulevard?
Yes.
You see how they built a ramp for water to go into these people's backyards? When it rains?
No, I did not see that.
You've been even there, Lauren?
Yeah, I, what do you mean ramp?
Well, what I mean by ramp is, the park is lifted compared to the houses.
Right.
And for, instead of, like, when it rains, instead of the water going towards the bed, it sits in their backyard. I don't live over there, but I got a phone call from someone that lives over there.
That's in the drainage basin that it goes to, and there was a, I don't even want to call, a barrier put between all the properties and the drainage spaces. When you first go into the park, and you go to the right, there's a big open pit there, and that's one of the retention ponds there, and that's blocked off from going into people's yards, and the water will drain into the basin. That's not somebody's backyard, that's township property.
Yeah, Jesse, the amount of time that went into the planning over there, it bears mentioning, if you come up to the microphone and you talk tonight, the engineer that helped us build that park is submitting that park for an award, a nationwide award, so we're waiting back to hear from it. So, there was, there was adjustments made for pitch and drainage. The planning was long, the planning was arduous, we worked side by side with DEP engineers, our Department of Public Works, our planners, there was nothing that's haphazard over there. So, and when we build something, we take into account for our residents. So, we have, we have not heard if anybody has an issue...
We haven't called Public Works either.
And nobody has called Public Works, nobody called this building.